Meeting, so we'll start the budget hearing around 1:15. I think that's how it's been noticed. And then the second hearing will be December 10th. That one will be in the evening at 6 o'clock. Both of these are obviously virtual, but again, would welcome the participation of anybody that would like to join part of the conversation. So that's my announcement for the day. I do want to kick off by saying that our first item is a PSA that was put together by the Commission on Women and Girls. This iteration or this group for the Commission on Women and Girls, you know, our work has been very challenging because we have never met in person because of COVID. And so the work that we're doing is a reflection of what we are all going through, whether it's work or personal lives or whatever. And the adjustments we've had to make because of COVID. And so we started the work as we typically would, building on the recommendations from last year related to pay equity and period products in schools and raising or raising voices of women and girls in our community. But about, you know, probably three months ago, some of the the members said, you know, it feels awkward not to talk about COVID-19 and the impact that it's had on women and girls in our community, especially women who are really challenged trying to create a balance between work and home life, especially when kids were not going to school. And kind of the the challenge is there for men and women, but so many women are head of household and single parents. That, you know, the idea is that women are disproportionately impacted here by COVID. And some of the national studies actually bear that out and talk about the long-term consequences of COVID related to the economies of women. And so they wanted to do something, they wanted to create a message that spoke to COVID, some of the challenges that are specific to women and girls, but also then take it the next step and offer resources by way of the county website. So that individuals who are experiencing issues related to mental health or addiction or just a reduction in salary or this balancing issue, that we would provide resources that they could use as we kind of work through this collectively. And so we've created a PSA. I want to especially thank Fatima Bah, my administrative aide, who did a lot of work to put this together, get the women and girls organized and get this ready to go. So it is ready to launch. We wanted to make sure that the commission saw it first. We'll also have it on the briefing tomorrow, but I wanted to make sure that my colleagues saw it before anybody else did. So we're going to go ahead and play it. And again, it's just, I think, a reckoning or a recognition that COVID has really impacted all of our lives and made things very challenging. But there are resources available and we want to make sure people know how to access those resources. So with that, Bridget, I'm going to let you play the PSA.
I have a hard time with online learning.
I wish I could afford counseling like I used to.
I have a hard time feeling balanced, taking care of my family and work.
I feel anxious.
I feel stressed.
I feel stressed when others don't wear masks.
My friend is in a domestic violence situation that has escalated during the pandemic. I don't know how to help.
I feel I can never see my friends outside of school.
Being a single mother during a pandemic is hard.
I don't want my friends and family to know that I'm struggling. COVID has been really hard on me and my family.
The pandemic has erased years of economic gains for women.
And is poised to leave lasting economic scars.
For resources, please go to HamiltonCountyOhio.gov.
Well, there it is. It's a little, I'm very proud of it. They are so proud of it, the commission. Boy, it's a gut check, isn't it?
Yes.
So anyway, so we're going to go ahead. Bridget, I guess we're going to put that on the county website, make sure the resources are listed too. But commissioners and anybody listening, if you'd like a copy of this to forward out to your networks, we would absolutely welcome that to try to make sure that we amplify the message that is, you know, we're here to help. So anyway, anything that you can do to spread the word, we'd be super grateful for. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
That was extremely nice. We were talking about creative ways to reach the public and that was certainly a different way of doing it. So I enjoyed it and it was straightforward and it was real. So thank you very much for Women and Girls Commission.
Thank you.
And also, Madam President, that hit so many nails on the head. You know, just the differences, the different concerns, because what this COVID-19 is doing, it's, you know, it touches so many people in so many different ways. And I think that with what you did, it hit on it and you should be proud of it. Proud of it.
Thank you. Thank you. We should all be proud of it because we're the ones that created the Commission on Women and Girls.
That's right.
So I appreciate that. And to be clear, it was their idea and they led the charge. So and Fatima really worked hard on this. So thanks to her and Resolve for doing it and Bridget Darty, of course, was very helpful as well. So so thank you all for your indulgence. I really appreciate it. And again, anything that you can do to amplify would be very much appreciated.
Would love to.
All right. So our next item is about sewers. And we're shifting gears a little bit. Thanks, Diana, for bringing us back down to reality.
More me to see the sewers.
That's right. So this is our quarterly update from MSD. So not to be confused with the budget discussion that we'll be having very shortly here, both related to the operating budget and the capital budget for MSD. Commissioners, you should have received those, I think it was last week, that we got the, we got a preliminary version, then we got the final version of those budgets, but that is not for today. Today is the third quarter update. So Diana, thank you for being here. I saw that Mary Lynn was on as well. So we'll look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you, commissioners. And yes, so today we are just giving an update on our 2020 operating budget as of the end of the third quarter. And Mary Lynn already started sharing her screen. So what we put together today, just some snapshots from the report that you all should have received probably last week as well. It may have been hard with all the other budget items you received, but this is just a short memo. So we just pulled out some of the tables from that to talk through today and wanted to share that with you. Again, we aren't requesting anything with this. It's just an update, but happy to go through this and take questions. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lynn, who is covering this for us today. Mary Lynn Loder is, as you know, our chief operating officer. We are still slightly understaffed in the budget realm this year. We've had some folks out and some vacancies. So but of course, Mary Lynn has this covered and she's going to get you started. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana, and thank you commissioners for having us here. I'll go ahead and get this started. I hopefully won't take too long, but certainly want to take your questions if you have any. And so I'll go ahead and get started with regards to just giving you a snapshot. This is kind of high level view of our budget on where we stand as of September 30th, 2020. As you can see, we have our personnel, non-personnel, our capital outlay and documents all laid out here. We've got our, what our requested budget in August of 2019, what was actually allocated and approved by the commissioners here. And then you can see what we had committed as of the end of September and our available budget and then our full year projections. And what you can also see here, if you look closely, is we do have, like, for example, our personnel budget was 59.9. We're just under that. For non-personnel, we're slightly over. And I don't want to get into all of that right now, but I did want to just let you know I'm going to talk about that stuff as we move along. So first, I'll start off with personnel spending through September. If you look at what, again, our allocated budget was 59.9 million. We're just coming in under that. So we are not going to need any additional personnel dollars. We're projecting we're not going to need any personnel dollars added. However, we are anticipating a need for an adjustment before the end of the year. And so, for example, as you can see in our wastewater engineering division, we are in need of some additional personnel dollars and we do have those personnel dollars already allocated, but to other divisions. So we're going to be preparing legislation to be able to make that adjustment so we can make that hole on the wastewater engineering personnel budget. So you will be seeing that in the next, next week or so. And this, these tables are all tables that we provided in the November 13th memo. This is just a little bit deeper dive on the personnel spending. Something new this year that we had an opportunity to take advantage of. It's an early retirement incentive program. And within, and this was a program that was developed in, for city departments to incentivize some of those employees that are near retirement. And within MSD, we had, I think there was about 103 employees that were eligible for this program. And ultimately, we had about 49, or exactly 49 employees that wound up accepting the early retirement program. And as you can see, I got this chart here that shows the breakdown of what divisions those employees came from. And so we really were hardest hit within more of our operating divisions, actually. So these are folks that are, are, you know, treating wastewater, taking lab samples, doing our inspections, you know, doing a lot of the work that absolutely needs to get done. So these are not necessarily positions that we are going to not fill. We are going to have to fill most of these. And and some of those employees actually have already left. And as of today, December 1st, 23 have already retired. In January, we're anticipating 22 having left. And then by July, we'll have four. Overall, this will result in some lump sum payouts to those employees for their benefits of sick time and vacation time. In 2020, that's a hit to our personnel budget of about $333,000. And there'll be additional lump sum payments in the 2021 budget.
Can I, can I interrupt you, Mary Lynn? Commissioners, please feel free to jump in as needed. Can I ask you, what was the anticipated goal of the early retirement incentive program?
So the anticipated goal, and Diana can chime in here too as well if she wants. The anticipated goal from our, from the city's standpoint was really, it came out after COVID. And so, you know, we're looking at COVID impacts or budget impacts. And could this be a way to do some rightsizing of some of the departments? And so we certainly looked at it from that standpoint, from MSD as well, in terms of, you know, is every position that's identified and people who are taking the early retirement, could that position be eliminated long term? And so from our standpoint, from the positions that were eligible and wound up taking it, many of those positions could not be eliminated. We did identify, though, about 10 positions that we are able to eliminate by looking at not just eRIP, but by other upcoming departures or vacancies. So we do anticipate that we will have some cost savings. In fact, we have already implemented two consolidations, if you will, of divisions. So for example, our watershed operations division, we've consolidated that into three other divisions and we are not filling the superintendent level position. The same thing with financing, finance and accounting, that we're able to eliminate a superintendent level position and then we're merging that with our wastewater administration position, division. So.
Excuse me, Mary Lynn.
Sure.
But what I'm thinking about is, at the end of 2017, I think it was, we were trying to decide, you know, who was coming to the county and who was going to stay. And there were some positions that were increased. And so my question is, are any of these positions a part of that? Jeff, am I saying that right?
Jeff, did you hear the question?
So Denise, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think, Mary Lynn, what she's referring to is that when we were going back and forth about the the structure of MSD and the ongoing conversations related to that, there was an increase in personnel during those years, not just a couple of years ago, and I think that's been ongoing. And so I think that the question is, how does that layer on to what you're talking about with this early retirement incentive program? Yeah.
Right. Are any of those positions included in here? So my question would be, are they new and how are they affected? I think that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I, if I could, yeah, chime in, because I think there's a couple of different things here. One is, a few years ago, there were positions that were identified, you know, that that were identified by classification. And so, you know, those are our different mechanics or sewer inspections and all the different levels of positions at MSD. You know, eRIP isn't really changing our overall staffing, either by, you know, the classifications or the number of staff that we have on our table of organization. It's really just impacting the positions that are funded or not. So, you know, as of today, the only two that we have, you know, determined we could hold bacon or eliminate essentially are those two high-level positions Mary Lynn mentioned, based every organization of those divisions. And all the others are either going to be filled, you know, at the same classification or another already existing, you know, MSD job classification that we have on our TO. So there isn't a change really in terms of those position classifications that have been, you know, shared and discussed.
Thank you, Diana. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Park?
I believe it does, but I think that the question would be, I would ask the question for, for, yes, it answers it.
And commissioners, commissioners, I apologize, but I'm having some internet problems on my end. So I only caught about maybe 5% of the of the past several minutes. Enough to know that a question was being asked of me that I was not able to chime in and answer. So I'll circle back with the board or we can get to it later on in the conversation. Sorry about that.
Okay, I think it does. And Diane, I think that what you are explaining to me is that it has to do with the classification and not necessarily the job title.
Correct. And if I may just add to that, to, so that the positions identified in this, this small chart here and by, by division, again, those are, those are employees that have a key component of the early retirement incentive program is that those employees have at least, at the time, 28 years of service. So it really didn't have anything to do with so much of what was, you know, developed in 2017, so much as these are folks who are, you know, having, they're now close to the, of meeting certain goals from a retirement standpoint. And, and so it was sort of done in a different vein, I guess, than what you might be referring to in 2017.
I see. I see. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mary Lynn, I had a question. I'm looking at the lump sum payment for 2020 and I was wondering why they didn't put it in the budget. Now I understand it was due to COVID and not anticipating that. But I do remember reading that in 2021, it will be incorporated in your budget so you don't have to figure out how to get it for the payout.
Correct. Yep, that's correct. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, and really, before we leave that topic, so we do have a lump sum payout, you know, a figure in the 2020 budget as well, based on known retirements or the anticipated retirement. So, you know, when we were developing our budget in 2019, we, you know, would have had a certain figure in mind based on trends and known retirements that did not include what we have now with eRIP because of the COVID impact. So we're a little, so we had a lump sum payout as part of our budget and we always do, but it wasn't, wouldn't have been.
As much.
But because of the extended vacancies and some of the hiring freeze that we had in place, we're able to cover it this year. You know, we didn't have all of the positions filled as we anticipated. So it worked out in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Now I'll turn to the non-personnel spending and then through September 30th of this year. And so again, I just wanted to kind of highlight the two columns that, you know, you might, sometimes you get lost in these charts. So it's good to maybe just kind of highlight something. So the two boxes are what I really want to just alert you to. The 2020 allocated budget of 70.9 million. And then at September, we were projecting a slight overage of 71.1 million. I think it says my, my, there's a box covering that figure, so I can't see it exactly. But essentially, at that time that we put together the third quarter report, our wastewater treatment division, you could see that we were looking at a potential overage of $158 million. And again, that was anticipated when we developed our 2020 budget because of the increased utility and hauling costs, chemical costs. This year, we also had to increase, we had to change our property insurance and that resulted in a change, many, actually many utilities, any purveyors of insurance result, saw increases in insurance premiums this year and it seems to be a trend. And as well as we had some additional costs unanticipated because of COVID. And again, this is what we reported in the end of the third quarter. Now, as we continue to manage and look at what we really can do or potentially defer in 2020, we are, this is kind of an update to you since the, the report was issued on the 13th of November. We have it in the report as a potential forecasted overage. We think we're going to be able to offset that, that additional cost with just deferring those potential expenses and staying with the, within the allocated budget. Let you know that, that we are not going to be coming with an additional request for non-personnel for this year and will, will be able to, we think, stay within the allocated budget for non-personnel. And again, I guess I just want to emphasize the, just to recap, in case I didn't say it, the, for the personnel, we will need an adjustment, but it will be a no-cost adjustment on the personnel side. And here we are on the non-personnel. We, we are going to be able to stay within the existing allocated budget by deferring some other things and managing within budget. Any questions before I move on to SBU?
No.
Okay. Our SBU budget, as you might recall, last, last month, you allocated an additional $2 million. It was originally budgeted at just over $9 million. And because of some expenses, you know, and storms that we experienced, as well as claims that we've experienced in 2020, we needed to get some additional funding for the SBU program, which you provided. I think it actually might have been in October. And so I just have a snapshot again of our SBU report that you can get online at our SBU webpage. And year to date, we've invested, through September, we investigated 3,207 work orders. We've cleaned 596 homes and, and you can go down the list here and see, you know, what our costs have been spent on in 2020 for the SBU program. So third quarter cleaning costs, we've had $538,000 spent on in this quarter.
Hey, Mary Lynn.
Yes.
Could you, just for our benefit, our context benefit, can you at some point provide a graph that shows this program and the number of households served and the amount of money going into the program over, say, the last five years or so? Would you be able to provide that to us?
Yeah, that's, that's actually on, at this link of, that I have on the, on the screen here. This is just a snapshot report here, but there's a column for every single year since the, the date of the, the program started in 2004. So we can consolidate that, I can make that, that however you want, but.
I think a visual might be helpful. I hear a lot that people are concerned about this program, but, you know, I know that we've continued to invest in it year after year. And so I am perplexed when I hear that, you know, a lack of commitment from the city and the county to this program. So I think a chart that shows the number of people being served and the amount of money we're spending here might be useful, just for a quick snapshot, a quick visual year over year.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Madam President, you know, I share your concern because I hear the same thing and I know that we are committed to helping our citizens when they suffer this, you know, the backups and that kind of thing. So, you know, I, I agree with you and I share your concern.
Yeah, just a quick graph, I think, might be helpful.
And Madam President, I also agree with you. I'm looking at the claims and it says 112 claims for $702,000. And I'm wondering, what is the average allocation of claims? I know it varies depending on the damage. And what would you say the average allocation for, you know, 112 people, I'm thinking?
Yeah, and yeah, that's a good question. And the, the average claim is, it might be closer to like, say, $10,000 or, and you might have then one, though, that's, say, $40,000. So the, the average is smaller and that might even be kind of a high average, the 10,000. But it does kind of vary by year as well and by, by. But we can, we can get, get more of that information. I think it's going to be useful to, to kind of, a little bit more down in those details a little bit as we are coming into the, the new budget year. Because just to, you know, not to steal our Diana's thunder from and the public hearing and hopefully folks are starting to look at what is in our, our budget proposal, one thing is to kind of try to start getting a little bit more preventative and proactive. We spend a lot of money on claims and cleaning and that always is rear, rear, it's, it's, it's rearview mirror stuff. It's already happened, you know, it's not really active. And it's not really preventative because you have to actually have backups in order for you to be able to get a backup device. What we have in our upcoming budget request is to maybe develop a more of a real proactive program so that if you're in a certain zone within the county and within our district that is, is susceptible to sewer backups, maybe we want to have a different program that actually incentivizes you to do something yourself, to actually put a prevention device in and we will offset some of those costs. And I think that some people might actually want to do some of that stuff, you know? I think that would be a good, a good thing to consider for, you know, where we're going in this program.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can, we can certainly try to slice and dice more of that information for you in the upcoming weeks.
Thanks.
Okay, good stuff.
Okay. The next slide I just want to give you a snapshot of is our capital outlay. And our OTEA stands for office technology equipment. And of course, I can't remember what the A stands for, but it's, you know, it's, it's kind of a group of, of capital outlay for, specifically for office and technology equipment that helps to, you know, us to do some repairs or enhancements of some key things. And then our fleet, of course, is, you know, our trucks and our vector equipment and stuff like that. Gators, lawn equipment, those kinds of things. Our fleet budget is 99% spent at this point. And of course, we did request twice, about twice as much of what we were allocated when you go back to our, I guess, original request. So we are 99% spent on our fleet. Then for our OTEA, that is projected also to be fully spent. Had to make some deferrals. We have, we always try to keep a list of, of more. We have, oh, we, we always try to keep a list of, of more than we can actually do because we want to be able to fully spend and, and keep up with things. But after several years of not getting, you know, even able to get through everything, that list is really growing. But we are anticipating to fully spend that, even though through September, we were only 45% spent. We're actually trying to see if we can procure some larger items. And so we were kind of deferring some of the little stuff, but we are going to fully spend that. Next, I want to talk about revenue a little bit. And this is something that Commissioner Drehouse, I think, asked to try to have a little bit more understanding on, or, you know, in presentation, a graphic that would show you where we, where we compare on our revenues compared to expenses. And so this first chart that's down on the left-hand side here is just that a snapshot of what our projected year-end revenues are at $267 million in 2020. And then our projected year-end expenses of $219.7 million. So you can see that just as a snapshot, we have more revenues coming in than we have expenses for 2020. And so just to kind of take a step back from that, then, you know, I just added some additional details here too. We've got, you know, we know that our revenues are down though from 2019. When you look at the full year projection, we're looking at about 3.4% below our 2019 revenues. And that is attributed, we attribute that to COVID as well as the loss of one large industrial user that we were anticipating. But most of those reductions or reductions in revenues are from COVID. And about 2% of that, and I've got that right down here, about 2% is related to just our average user not using as much flow or our, our, even our commercial industrial users not using as much flow, not using as much water, even though on the residential basis, maybe those numbers are up. But overall, for all of the flow that we're treating, we, we're seeing a slight decline, about 2.9% of a reduction in our sewer service charge. That's what the sewer service charge is, which is the, the first thing up here. And the second decline that we're seeing is on our surcharges. And surcharges is what we get from our commercial industrial users that are giving us a higher strength of wastewater and we actually charge them for the, the strength of their wastewater, based on the sampling that we do and the sampling that they do. And then, and how much they use, that, that turns into an additional cost for them. Because of the additional cost, it takes us to treat that waste. And because some of those commercial industrial users have been impacted by COVID, we've seen a decline in the amount of surcharges that we're getting in. And as you can see, it's about a $3 million difference here. And that's by, by a percentage though, that's about 15% reduction in our surcharges that are coming in compared to 19. But overall, for the full year, we're looking at about a 3.42% reduction in our revenue because of, of COVID. And that's equating to about $10 million difference. But overall, our, our revenues are still higher, about $47 million higher than our expenses with all of these adjustments. Any questions before I move on from revenues?
Nope.
Okay. So that brings me to the end. Essentially, we're continuing to, to closely monitor our personnel budget. We don't anticipate a need for additional personnel dollars, but we do anticipate a no cost adjustment within the next couple of weeks. You know, certainly before your last meeting, we will get that adjustment legislation to the county administration. And, and again, do, do just kind of managing within our existing personnel budget of some things we're able to defer, we're not going to need additional non-personnel. And we just continue to, you know, try to manage that and stay within the existing, existing budget by, by deferring some of the non-essential expenditures. And with that, that brings me to the close. Any questions?
Very good. Hey, Mary Lynn, could you remind us what the, on the personnel side, what the increase was year after year, just for employee payout or from employee, I'm sorry, employee pay? Was it, it was a 3%?
Oh, do you mean, I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
Do you mean like the cost of living and death benefits and all of that?
It varies by year.
Yeah.
And I think it varies by, by bargaining unit or whether there is no bargaining unit. So I'd have to get back to you unless Diana had that off the top of her head.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have the, you know, the breakdown we provided in the operating budget. And it is pretty, you know, standard, I think, similar to last year. So we've got about a 2% increase for healthcare and 2% for cost of living. All, again, it does depend on the bargaining unit.
But I think that's for, for next year. I, I believe that actually this.
It is for next year. I was just, yeah.
Yeah. For, for, but for this year, I believe that our, I believe that our healthcare costs like increased like 11% or something from 19 to 20.
There was a big increase. That's right.
Yeah. So there were some big things and we can, you know, get that back. But I think also that cost of living is not so much for a year. That kind of happens based on council making determination or it already being in a bargaining unit agreement.
So I remember, I remember reading about your merit program. And so how, what's the range on the percentage that someone could receive for a merit? In your budget?
That's usually up to 3% for merit increases. So that's up a step.
So I remember, I remember, I remember reading what you sent us and you were saying for next year, 3%, which would be inclusive of merit. It was cola, it would be health insurance. I was just a little surprised that there were not more. Not that I want you to ask for merit. I'm thinking, you know, the cola itself is, I was thinking would be 3%. So wondering if that was inclusive of merit and health increases. So.
Yes. I think those, 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 those costs are broken out separately. And we would have a 2% for cola. And again, this is based on contracts that the city has for healthcare insurance and stuff like that. And, you know, whatever those premiums are, that's all calculated based on the employees we have and, and what those are. It's not just 2% for everything. It's.
So that was my original question as far as a merit. What percentage, how high can you go from merit, considering the amount of staff that you have? What is the highest merit that someone could get?
I think the highest that you can get is 5%. I think it's the highest.
Okay. Okay. Which would be significant with the amount of staff that you have. So.
Yeah. And we wouldn't anticipate everybody to be able to get that.
Sure.
You know, I mean, that's, I mean, you'd like to think that you have amazing staff everywhere. And we do, we have great staff. We should be planning for more for them, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions related to your presentation?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll announce the budget hearings at the top of the meeting for the county budget. So Diana, remind us when the budget hearings are for MSD.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Our first hearing is this Thursday, December 3rd, and it is at 1:15. And the second hearing is the following Thursday, December 10th, also at 1:15.
Yeah. So yours are both during the regularly scheduled meetings, unlike our budget hearings where we're taking one at night. Okay. All right. Very good. So again, if there's anyone that would like to comment to the upcoming budget, feel free to jump on and provide that comment during our meetings on Thursday, this Thursday and next Thursday.
And I don't have the link off the top of my head, but you can always just go to msdgc.org and you should be able to find the information about the budgets that is, it's shared on our website if people wanted to review the proposals.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, anything else?
No, I just wanted to comment that the decisions that the commission made last year as it relates to the budget, I think were really sound decisions. And that MSD tried really hard to work within that budget. And so I'm just really happy about that.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Thank you both for being with us. We'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Our last item is a budget adjustment related to the CARES Act. Jeff, or, or I see that John is on as well. John, give us the details of this one.
Yeah. This is just a $650,000 increase in mental health state grants. And this is essentially the appropriations necessary for the revision that the commission made that CARES Act planned last week for additional allocated expenses to mental health. We brought it forward today because it's non-personnel and we're coming up on year-end deadlines related to non-personnel expenses tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions related to this?
No questions. My questions have been answered already. Thanks.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to move that we approve of the budget adjustment number 45, the amount of $650,000 for CARES Act mental health providers.
Second.
Sure, Drehouse?
Yes.
Sure, Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, anything else that we need to discuss or county administrator?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nothing else.
Okay. All right. Thank you all and we'll be back on Thursday.
Thanks.
Take care.